Hi, good evening. I'm Kristi Boudreau, Chair of the Hatfield School Committee. It is 7:03 June 8th, and I'm calling this meeting of the school committee to order. First up, we have public comment. Seeing as we have no one publicly in our audience, we will take a look to see if there's anyone who's joining us online that would like to speak at public comment. Seeing none, we will start out with our informational reports. The first is a very quick update. Given the fact that our last meeting was not held on video, we did have a short reorganization meeting the other night and some new appointments. So I am really honored to get to serve as Chair. Equally honored to have Kathy as Vice Chair. And welcome to our new member, Adam Sullivan. And I think this is probably a really appropriate time to thank Becca for an amazing year of service. We really appreciate all that you did. And also to say congratulations.
Masters.
So, and also a public thank you to Danielle Stenashewski, who really has reflected the best of us in many ways in her commitment to service of the community and for three years of dedication to the school committee and to the kids of Hatfield. I think we all agree, we have a big thanks to Danielle. So, from that, we did make a few appointments, and so just to, they're reflected in the minutes coming up, but very quickly, we're looking for consistency. Kathy and I will continue on in roles with negotiations. Kathy's going to continue going to the collaborative and representing us there. Adam is going to join me on our budget subcommittee. Becca and Kathy will be on policy. And Becca's going to continue on, is it long-term planning? What's the appropriate title of that group? Long-term planning? Long-range?
Oh, the town one?
Changed it. It's not master. Comprehensive Planning Committee.
And Becca is grateful, I'm grateful she's going to continue on with the Comprehensive Planning Committee. So with that, we will turn it over to our student representative, Hadley Zinal.
Can I just interrupt?
Sure.
I think John Garrett would like to speak. He came on just as you started.
I'm so sorry, John. Before we, so John Garrett, you're recognized?
Are you there, John?
Hi, how are you?
There you are. Hi.
I am John Garrett, HGA Co-President, and I just wanted to thank the committee for putting the issue of retroactive pay and adjustments to the calendar on your agenda for this evening and just saying that it would be great to see those two passed. And especially the retroactive pay is a really a matter of, you know, support for those that support our students and the staff every single day at the school. So, thanks, that's all I got.
Thank you. Thanks for joining us. Okay.
Okay. So, Really for Life is June 17th, and the Student Council raised $400 for it, like I said, I think like a month or two ago at our spring fling dance. Graduation was last Friday, June 3rd. We had some student volunteers help out. It was a beautiful night. I don't know if any of you went. It was, I know you were there, it was great. We held our Student Council elections last week as well. And our new Student Council President is Kat Kokoski. Our Vice President is Amelia Nevs. Our Secretary and WMASE Board Member is Alexa Jagajinski. And our Treasurer is Emma Tisdale. And we are in finals week this week. We have extended periods, like four final exams starting tomorrow that will last us through Monday. And then Wednesday is our last day of school. So, wish us luck for final exams, but that's all we got right now.
Good luck.
Thanks.
Superintendent Wood?
Sure. So, graduation was exceptional. It was a great night, certainly. Just a few things. We're working as a committee to look at mathematics resources, K through eight. And we will be holding a meeting next Tuesday to look at the resources that we've looked at to see if they meet all of our expectations. We've looked at, I think, five different ones total. Not all of them K to eight, so that's one of the things that we'll have to take a look at. But hopefully we'll be able to find a resource. We have met to discuss a PD plan, so we have a draft plan that we're taking a look at. We'll finalize that as well, so that we have a good year picture of what we need to do. And as we look at our district improvement goals and our school improvement goals, we'll certainly try to weave those in, especially on the early release days, so that teachers can, you know, make sure that they have some consideration of activities that would support those goals. I'm on a committee that's looking at our November 8th day. This is one that we put on our calendar for a regional opportunity. And this is especially, it's going, obviously, there'll be opportunities for everybody. We'll take a look at what we need to plan for the majority of our staff, but there's certainly staff that are singletons, music, art, you know, even in our school situation, chemistry, physics, and so forth. So we're trying to look at, trying to plan for those individuals as well. So it's most of Hampshire County and a good chunk of Franklin County that will be involved in that. So that's going well. We had interviews for our Director of Technology. We had four very qualified candidates, and I hope to have a recommendation or finalist decided upon very shortly, so that we can fill that before the end of the school year. And the positions that we know are open, the majority of them have been posted, and the Principals and the Director of Special Ed will arrange for those interviews in the coming days and weeks to make sure that we have those filled before people go home. If we have paraprofessional openings, which right now, I think we only have one vacancy, if any, no, we don't even have that one, we'll, if any changes happen over the summer, we'll do those in August, so that we can get those. Smith Academy looked amazing inside and out for our graduation exercises. Many thanks to our custodians who arranged for the setup. Dina Pulveri, Pulvereri, and Castel Boyle were the graduation advisors. They did lion's share of the planning and the execution, along with Riley Malinowski and Jackie Pelz in my office. And so many thanks to them to make that night as special as it was for everybody. It really was, really well done. We had a planning meeting for the walkway project. We're going to be meeting with the Conservation Committee next week on the 16th, just to finalize the distances between, in Phase Two, the walkway gets very close to the wetlands right there, and so I think it's 100 feet buffer has to be, the norm has to be 100 feet buffer and unless, or you need a waiver from the Conservation Committee. So we're going to meet with them and talk with them about that. And actually, our Director of Facilities took the lead and has reached out to the Conservation Committee, so we'll hear back from him to see what our next steps will be before the Conservation Committee. We held the Race to be Human viewing at Hatfield Elementary on May 25th. It was a great evening, well attended for a nice warm evening. Madeline Bell, who was a senior, now graduate of Smith Academy, and author scientist Dr. Jaleel Johnson were members of the panel. He is also a resident of Hatfield. So it was a very, I thought it was a great way to have two, you know, people who live here to talk about the issues that were raised in the film. And if you haven't had a chance to see it, I think it's, the link is available and it's out there now. It's been posted. Teacher evaluations are done, and paraprofessional evaluations have been done and shared with our staff. And kind of circling back, you know, part of making November 8th unique and individual to the needs of our staff is we are also inviting our staff who would like to be presenters on that day to share their ideas about presentations that they might want to do that they think would be beneficial to others. So that will be happening as well. And that's my report.
Questions for Mr. Wood?
Can you just remind us of what current positions are open and haven't been filled?
So, the ones that have been posted, we have a math teacher position and a science teacher position at Smith Academy. And did preschool get posted yet? Preschool opening?
And speech.
And speech.
At the high school?
Long-term.
That'll be district.
Long-term sub for first grade.
First grade for the first half of the year.
Can we talk a little bit about the math curriculum?
Sure.
So, just looking ahead, are there big differences between what you're, you've seen most of the contenders now, right?
Yes, yeah.
Are there big differences?
I think what we're looking for is a set, a series or a set of materials that really have a better blend of hands-on problem solving with skill building at the same time, so that teachers aren't having to supplement on an ongoing basis, that it's all there and it's intertwined together. So that's, that's our goal, is to try to find those pieces. The dilemma or the description that I get from the teachers for the elementary who are using Savis this year is that it's too language-heavy in that, you know, especially for children who are just learning to read, it's, that's a big piece of the problem of trying to get them then to transition to do the problem solving and/or to build the skills, is that they have to overcome the language barrier that they themselves might individually have if they're not ready to read, to learn.
Are they all multimedia curriculum at this point?
Yes, yeah.
And cost-wise comparable? I'm not looking to the district to buy on cost. I'm just looking to, for budget planning, and how different that might be.
We haven't really looked at money yet because we haven't defined what is exactly we need, so it's kind of, so we haven't talked money yet with the vendors out there.
Okay. And then how, it looks like K through eight, is there conversations going on that look at how you transition from June, middle school years to high school math?
There, there have been, but it's a smaller part of the conversation that we're having right now.
Okay.
But many of the programs that we're looking at have complementary materials for nine through 12.
We're still trying to hire a math teacher?
Math intervention.
Oh, math intervention.
Yeah, oh, math, we have a math teacher opening at the Smith Academy, yes, at the high school.
Right.
Yes.
Right.
And the math interventionist.
So that's another position. Okay.
And a math interventionist at the elementary school?
Right.
Is the hope that this new system going to be implemented in the fall for this coming year, or is it going to take time to roll it out?
Well, we certainly will need to, I mean, part of our PD plan is to look at implementation and the training necessary, so that certainly will be a part of that. So we'll, we'll have to look at what's really required for PD, and if it's more than what we can get done in those first two days, then we'll look at maybe a slower rollout later in the year so that we can build in some time during those early release days.
So, I guess.
Or on the 8th.
Just kind of keeping our awareness up as we look at talking about budget things over the next year where folks, because of the override possibility, this is one of those places where I feel like when we start using curriculum that's cross-media, it's usually more expensive, but worthwhile. And so as people look at, how do you, how are our, how are our costs going up while our services are level? It's, it's stuff like this where it's like, well, we're adding value and helping get our math capability up, and new curriculum has cost attached.
Right.
And I know you've budgeted for it. I'm just, a matter of like keeping our whole committee kind of in the mindset of having examples that are current and realistic, and so that if we have questions, we can answer them.
Yeah. I'm just wondering too, with the PD schedule and bringing on new curriculum, and I think within the last couple of years, there's been new reading, the starting of foundations.
Right, K to two.
And district, is part of that PD looking at bringing in consultants, like for the initial PD, and then having, having it go somehow long-term, so that teachers aren't feeling like, we got this new curriculum, we got these two, these two days of training, and now it's done?
Right.
Is there a planning to then look at implementation in the classroom and a possibility of bringing consultants back? Because the curriculum is only as good as, you know, the training and the buy-in and the...
Right. So certainly for, if we do get to the math piece for the start of the year, we would want to look at sometimes, you know, late in the fall and then early in the spring for some regrouping around any issues or questions that teachers have so that they can follow through. And then, you know, I would like, you know, it's ideal actually if we could get one of the consultants to come to the school so they could actually be on-site and see how teachers are actually implementing lessons and give feedback.
Perfect. Isn't that something we could build into the contract with them?
It could be. Oh, absolutely, yeah.
I was going to say that.
Yeah, it's just, it's all about whether or not they still, you know, do that in terms of their, on their end.
Okay. And you have more reporting.
Yeah. Do you want me to read Dr. Dr. Driscoll's report, or did you have a chance to read it?
We also.
That's the security report.
Some security stuff, yeah.
Yep.
Go ahead, and I think you should speak to the security update. And then, then we can do Dr. Driscoll's stuff.
So, the, you know, clearly, the events of Texas and New York are very upsetting on a number of levels. And school security is always a top priority for those of us who are inside schools, and I think for everybody who attends school, you know, we want our kids not only to be safe physically, but we want them to be feeling safe emotionally, so that they have the ability to engage in learning. Because if they're mentally strained by their concerns about being safe, that's, that's a, not a good way to start the school day. Our primary resources for safety, let me back up. So about this, at the beginning of May, I think it was May 3rd or May 4th, we had a safety meeting with our Chief of Police and our Chief, Fire Chief, for, for different reasons, obviously, in some respects. But we were looking at what are some of the safety steps that we need to take. So there's some pieces here that, you can talk about that. Our main course of action for safety is awareness. And it's through making sure that we do have our doors locked, and we do make sure that both our exterior doors, but also our interior doors. We did talk about making sure that we inspected our doors to make sure they're all latching at this, at this meeting. We want to make sure that when we're inviting people into the schools, I know it, it can feel off-putting, but we need to make sure that we screen people who are coming in. It's a big, in some respects, a burden to the school's secretarial staff, because they've got to visually sort of eye you up and down, make sure that you don't have anything that looks like a weapon or might have anything that could arm those when you get inside. Our buildings are not all, and we've talked about this in terms of earlier in the year, about capital planning, some of the things we want to do to the Smith Academy office, because it's not, doesn't lend itself to really inspecting people at the front door. The, the cameras are, while we do have a camera right on the front door in both buildings, the camera at the front door, at least at Smith Academy, which I'm more familiar with, it's just visually, it's very hard to see whether or not somebody really has something in their arms that might be a weapon of sorts. So that, keeping that door locked until they're buzzed in by the staff is really a critical, crucial step. And so we, you know, those two pieces, that front door and then classroom doors, need to be locked on a regular basis at all times as well. I know it's an inconvenience, people have to remember to have their keys, but it's really a critical part of how we, how we keep people safe. The, and of late, even before this happened, we were, we had kind of stepped up our reminders to, to teachers and to students that they were not to let in people, even if they were at the front door. Even though that feels like the kind and courteous thing to do, it's, it's really not what we want them to do, because that's not their role. They, they're not screening people the way we expect our, our staff in the office to do. And I did reach out to Officer McLaughlin to look at, because we do have new staff in our office, to, because we did have some training earlier in this, in the fall, and to see if we could have another training for our newest staff, so that they could, you know, have that training in their background. We, out of the May 4th meeting for safety, things that we are, are planning on doing and trying to move forward on now with a little more urgency, we need to number, be sure that all of our windows and doors are numbered appropriately. This is more for, God forbid, there is an event, that they need to be able to direct personnel to the right location, to where they need to go. You know, it sounds like part of the issue in Uvalde was, you know, that while they knew where at least one, the one, what they expected to be one person was, they didn't go into the building for a long period of time, and so, or what seemed like a longer period of time, and I'm going by news reports. Having the building numbered appropriately and having the personnel, our safety personnel, trained to know where those are in relation to where an event might be taking place is really critical, so that they could get into the building, be safe, protect themselves, and take action against anybody who is an intruder in the building. We also need to get more cameras in our buildings. There are some blind spots in, in both buildings. Again, visually outside of the buildings, but also in the hallways, so that we know what's going on. We have to look at, we have to look at phone replacement at Smith Academy. We did do some phone replacements earlier in the fall at Hatfield Elementary School. I'm not sure, we need to maybe do an inventory again about what's working and what's not working at Hatfield Elementary, but I felt like we, we did three or four of them in, in the fall to make, and it's a newer system, so it's a little easier to get them. Smithfield Academy has an older system, and so getting phones to work with our main system is a little bit tricky. And so we have to look at what's our best next step with that, to make that tour. We also are looking at further repairs for the intercoms at Smith Academy. Again, we did some work in the fall, because we could not, there were some spaces that we couldn't get, get to with the intercom, they couldn't hear. So we, we did fix a few, but again, we need to do a better inventory and make sure we know exactly what places either can't hear it because the volume is just too low and there's something wrong with the speaker, or is it the fact that we, we have no, you know, like the hallways are not well intercommed. So it's very hard to hear an announcement in the hallway. So if something's going on there, you know, we have to, you know, do that. And just in general, I didn't add it here, but it's getting to the end of the school year, kids are a little, feel a little more rambunctious, certainly at the, at the academy. And we, we need to make them aware that their safety depends on us knowing where they are at all times. That's why we have a schedule, that's why they have a schedule. We need to know where they are. And, you know, just taking a moment to, you know, go into the Learning Commons and have a conversation with a student or a teacher, for that matter, and have it be longer than what the teacher whose classroom they left would expect it to be. We've had a lot of recent reports of, you know, do you know where this student is? And this, you know, it's, we're comfortable with one another, and that's a nice feeling to have, but at the same time, we have to make sure our kids understand that when their parent calls and they're looking to dismiss their child, we have to know where they are. So any, any liberties they're taking by not being where that we think they are supposed to be and their teacher expects them to be, is really a liberty that we can't afford. So, so we've been cracking down on that. And that's something Dr. Driscoll and the office staff have been working with teachers on doing at the, at Smith Academy. I don't know if you want to add anything more from your perspectives in terms of school safety?
No, you've pretty much covered it. The intercom system also, I mean, the, the phone system at Hatfield also has some volume issues, so we were having conversations about when kids have gone to really go through and make sure that every room you can hear in, and then start figuring out ways to ensure that that gets fixed.
We did add additional walkie-talkies at the elementary school this year.
That's true, we did.
Which has been very helpful. And, you know, making sure that key people in key places at key times bring a walkie-talkie with them. So we want to make sure that they're utilized. They exist and they should be used.
And that's, I just want to give kudos where, kudos are deserved. The Chief of the Fire Department here had received a grant, and so they were able to buy new, new walkie-talkies, and they gave us their existing walkie-talkies with, with new batteries too. So, yeah.
That makes a difference.
Makes a huge difference. So.
Questions?
I have one about, I have two. Where are we with that discussion about changing up the office at Smith Academy?
So, I did get a report back. I mean, it's something we would have to put into capital planning. The, the initial stages, the initial cost of a redesign plan would be about $38,000. So we need to, you know, work with capital planning in the fall and see if we can't get that into, into the, into the mix.
Because that was the start. That was.
Yeah.
The first of probably two sizable.
Yes. Yeah, that's just for the planning process.
Yeah, capital planning did take a look at that.
It did.
And it's sort of on the page.
Yep.
It isn't right now.
Okay. Well, hopefully it doesn't get buried anywhere because of...
It can't.
It's probably more likely to have problems from Creep than from getting buried.
Right.
My other question, I know Smith Academy has a panic button. Does the elementary school as well?
I will have to research that.
Don't think so.
I don't, I don't. Though we do have occasions where we've accidentally called 911 because the nine button ends up getting pushed too many times, but as far as an actual button, I don't, I don't believe so.
I'll look into that, yeah.
Because Connor accidentally.
Yes, yes he did.
We all know that. So that just made me think, if we have one there.
Right.
Should we have one at the elementary school as well? And what would that involve?
Just kind of in the same vein, we implemented these a couple of years ago, and it was explained at that time, but could you reiterate for me, the blue lights?
Yeah.
How are those like activated, and are they working, like?
I'd have to research, I know about them, but I'd have to research.
I didn't know if they were attached to the panic button, you know?
I don't know.
The game too.
Yeah, I'll look into it.
Yeah, because there's the signs.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't, yeah.
I'll look at that.
Do the schools have doorstops? I had a parent reach out and ask. So like, not just like, you know, the latches lock, but like a physical, you know, thing?
We don't.
Okay.
Yeah, no, we don't.
Something has been considered, or would be considered?
It definitely would be considered, but we, we have not gone through that exercise yet.
Okay.
Because like I say, all of our doors do lock, so with the exception of one that I'm aware of, but we're working on that. So, you know, theoretically shouldn't need that, but...
The lockdown drills that all our staff do include, one step is to barricade in addition to being proactive, ready with some kind of.
Right.
Object or something to, to push back on somebody. So, so it's weird, it's just the, the nature of being a teacher right now. I bet if you asked any of our teachers, they would tell you exactly what they put in front of the door, exactly what they hold in their hand. So we don't have extra things, but most teachers have some thing that goes in front.
Yeah, I don't know if it's raining here, but like in prior schools, we, we train teachers to grab a notebook and shove it under the door as a doorstop.
Did you have a question? Go ahead. I was, so the doors during the, the school day are locked and closed, or they're just locked? just locked to be ready to be closed? Like throughout the school day, are teachers asked to keep their doors closed and locked?
Yes.
Okay.
So just going along with that, I'm assuming since we're locking every single door everywhere, that like police, fire, and EMS all have like the master key and.
Yes.
We have extra ones. Okay. Sometimes locking too many doors can be a problem too. So that's why I just wanted to double check.
And then if we got our, does the radio, do the walkie-talkie system have like an emergency channel to, like can you, especially if we got them from the fire, like can you guys sync onto a walkie station and can you communicate with Hatfield PD from your walkies? If you're all on the same channel?
I believe we can, but I, I don't know that, that it's been cued that way, because we had to reprogram them, so I don't know when we reprogram them.
Okay.
There's like a Hatfield public safety emergency.
And I know that some of them too have like a 911 line.
Right.
I don't know how effective that would be though, given that, you know, we're not fully staffed all the time with, I mean, there's.
Walkies.
I mean, I think the idea is still to call 911.
Right.
Right.
So that they know what the emergency is and what to send, right.
Or if it went to the dispatch line or something.
Yeah.
Um.
Is there a specific time you guys train on this? Is there, is this part of the summer PD that, that you go back through all this with teachers?
We did it at the, at the beginning of the year, we met as administrative team with the police and, and the fire, um, and then it's gone over on that first day back meeting that they have with the staff.
Okay. I just have one more, sorry. Um, I, I know that there's other towns around here that have, and I don't know who decides this or how, how it works, but like a shelter in place versus like an alestrel with like evacuation routes. So I was just wondering, I guess how, you know, we're, it sounds like we're a shelter in place.
Yes.
And is that, like who decides that or like is that?
Well, the principal has to make that determination first and foremost, you know, or whichever administrators in the building at the time. So they have to make that decision first and foremost. And then they have to, you know, should there be a necessity, you know, once, once safety personnel arrive, there would be a conversation that, you know, let's say the intruder has been, um, somehow, um, secluded to a particular section of the building and we can evacuate the rest of the building and, and that's the direction of the safety, because once the safety personnel are in place, they're in charge as far as that, that piece, so then we would follow that order and evacuate the building.
The kids don't practice that?
Um.
Like evacuation?
Not, not per se, no.
Okay.
Because there's a difference between like our shelter in place and our lockdown.
Right, and there are districts that, and I don't even know, I, I don't even necessarily have a preference, but there are built, like there are schools that do like the alest training where.
Full alest.
The whole training is.
Right.
To train the kids how you evacuate the building versus sheltering in place. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Um, just my last question, just because in the beginning of this, you know, you mentioned sort of like mental health resources, crisis support, you know, just sort of all the time.
Right.
Right, something we always want to do. Could you just remind me like very high level, like what we have for that at the school? Like what people are in place to like support the mental health of our students and school community?
So at, uh, help, at Hatfield Elementary, we have an adjustment counselor, full-time in the building. And then at Smith Academy, we have a school psychologist available in the building and the, uh, guides.
How often is the school psychologist in?
She's in there every day.
It's a full-time.
Full-time position.
And at least part of that has ramped up in the last year or so, correct? Because it wasn't, uh, the adjustment counselor wasn't always a full-time position.
Correct.
That's new that it's.
This year it's full-time.
This year, so again, as we look at ways we're supporting our students.
Right.
Here's another where we've, we've added in, we've stepped up.
Right.
We also partner with River Valley, um, to provide, um, private counseling, but during the school day that's accessible to students, so, uh, parents don't have to worry about time outside of the school day or transportation. Um, and we're actually, uh, adding more, another person to that, um, so we'll be offer, be able to offer more sessions, um, so that's expanding.
And even though those people are contracted to work specifically with certain students, they are also sometimes available and will go and support classrooms as needed if we ask them to, especially if we were going in to do like a specific conversation or topic. When we had deans passing, we, they went in with us to go to each of the two classrooms that were most affected, um, to also offer support for students.
Awesome. Great. Any further questions, conversation? Okay. Thank you, thank you so much. Thank you.
Let's finish final.
Okay. Um, does any, I was going to ask the committee, would you like for Dr. Driscoll's report to be spoken to or we, anyone need, have any questions? Okay. I think we can.
I'm comfortable with it just entering the minutes.
I'm fine with that too, but I'm, before we carry on, I'll.
Yeah, there's a lot of it that is, that was covered between Hadley and Mr. Wood.
I did leave out that we do have a social studies position that's open at the high school, um, due to retirement.
Yeah, I think we've seen that, all of that is in there. Okay. Ms. Brimner? Or did I skip? I'm so sorry. Teacher, would you like to give your report?
Sure, absolutely. So we have successfully completed all of our MCAS, so math and science finished up at the end of May. Um, we had our teachers meeting with our interventionists for the SRSD, uh, final assessments for their writing and compared fall data or the last ti, uh, post, pre-test data to post-test data with our classroom teachers. The PTA generously purchased books for the sixth grade, uh, the first Harry Potter book, so there was a book study completed and they took a field trip to the Tower Theater to rent out the entire theater and watch the movie together as a, a sixth grade group. Uh, the annual Jane Yolen Writing Award Ceremony took place at the Pavilion on June 3rd. Uh, Jane handed out 17 awards to our recipients and grades, in fact, two of them were recipients here, first grades through sixth grade. Sixth grade students walked up to tour Smith Academy and meet their seventh grade team this past week. Uh, Mr. Duncan Hurst and Kristen Plano put together a fourth through fifth gr, sixth grade, uh, talent and band concert. It was the first time that we were bringing families in, so it was really exciting to see so many. We were initially thinking, I mean, he really only wanted it to be something really kind of small, they, they had, you know, haven't really done much as far as like any kind of concert, um, but he thought only a few families would show up and like headstand for like 30 and the next thing it was like 60 because grandparents and neighbors came, so that was very exciting. Um, and it was great to hear parents leaving going, "That was so awesome, it's starting to feel like school again." So that was awesome. First through sixth grade today attended the Westfield Starfires baseball game. Um, they were absolutely hysterical. Kids had, uh, shoes, rocks, uh, their foreheads, their baseball caps, anything they could find to get autographed. The baseball team felt like they were rock stars, the kids just thought there was like Big Poppy had shown, I mean, they were just like shrieking and excited. Great time had by all. Our preschool picnic is going to be tomorrow and field day for all students will be this Friday. Uh, this weekend on Sunday, our PTA in the past had done a big fundraiser, um, Strawberry Fest, that's not happening. Instead of doing a summer blast, I'll be doing a robo-call to give more information, but that's happening this Sunday, there'll be food trucks, water events, big raffle baskets. And next week, sixth grade is doing their step-up ceremony in the evening on Tuesday, June 14th at 5:30, followed by a PTA meeting at 7:00. And our last day of school is Wednesday, the 15th with a half-day. I know, it's so much so, and it goes by like that.
Were all the classes involved in the talent show or was that specifically like banned?
It was fourth through sixth. Initially I thought it was fifth and sixth, that was my bad.
I'm sorry, I meant the classrooms for fourth through sixth.
Fourth graders through, well, because fourth grade doesn't actually participate in the band, they don't, they're too young, they start the band in grade five. They offered up, I guess, the talent portion of it to grades four because apparently enough kids were saying that they wanted to participate or they had things that they wanted to share. So they opened up a talent portion to that, to the kiddos, but the majority of it was then just, um, the fifth and sixth grade band performing. And again, only the fifth, the fourth through sixth grades attended to watch it. Um, it wasn't, again, even opened up to the rest of the school because, again, just kind of wanted to start small because the kids hadn't really been used to performing in front of a, a large group, but they didn't seem to fare too badly, so next year maybe we will open it up to the entire school, but this particular spring, it was starting small.
Are you going to be able to speak to us about before and after-school care next year?
So I've already reached out to Chris Taggart. They definitely, there's definitely, I'm guessing, hopefully a need for this as well for coming up next year. Um, I know that the, I was planning on sending out a survey, the, there's been talk about the box program again, apparently that's a, a few day a week, three to four day, actually two to three, two to three days in which, um, there's like, um, physical fitness kinds of things that are done, kids can kind of get their energy out. Julie Lanville had been responsible for helping support that. Um, but also the morning care needs to have a certain amount of students to participate, um, before they're actually able to pay for the person who's there. And then after-school care, yes, he's still looking to hire someone. So the person who had been there this past fall, Emily, was a college student, so I think she had been with him for a couple of years, she's now graduated, so he's back to the drawing board about trying to find someone to bring in, so. As far as an after-care, yes, definitely next year, but before-care is still a question and I'm going to try to gain more of an idea of how many people are interested, because again, it would need to be covered by staff and/or, um, his program, but again, it's a, it'd be a fee-based service.
Do we know what the make or break number would be?
14 for before-care.
Okay.
What would the hours on the before-care be?
I believe 7:30, is that what it's been in the past, 7:30 maybe? 7:30 to, I think 7:30. Don't quote me, I don't know. I can find out.
That sounds familiar, but I'm not sure. Do you know?
I don't know, we didn't use.
Would that, and that's separate from the box program?
Correct.
Which started at 7:30.
Uh, that's probably, maybe that's where I'm getting the 7:30 number from, maybe.
Yeah. I, I think we, we probably can't stress enough how important before and after-care are for families, um, but equally important is making sure that they know what's coming so that they can make plans. So we have lost students from our district because we didn't have a plan ready. I think certainly COVID played a big role in that, so I'm not, this is not a pointing fingers at the district, it's just a matter of, okay, we've, we've got to step up and make sure we have a plan and that we're over-communicating that out to families. I think, I, I would not be surprised if you can get 14 signed up for before-care. I think that's, I've heard from enough families that I think you're halfway there.
Okay.
So I'm excited to see you sitting that out sooner than later, just so people feel like they know what they're doing next year before next year gets here. Thank you.
There was so much uncertainty last year around it.
It, there have been some challenges and I think it's, it's, you know, they had some growing pains on the provider end for sure. So it would be helpful to continue to hear how that's going over the summer.
Sure.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any other questions for elementary?
Um, I had one. The, I know that, that the current pre-K students did a visit with kindergarten, I don't know if there's a lot of, I don't know if there's a lot of prospective kindergarten students that weren't in preschool to do that, so is, is there going, is there another like kindergarten classroom visit that's being scheduled?
In the, oh, sorry. Yeah, in the fall. I mean, I sent out a letter to any of the families that were interested, saying that they wanted to come to kindergarten and said that, you know, yay, you're coming here for, for kindergarten, more information will be forthcoming in the summer about having an orientation.
Okay.
Coming in to meet the teachers, coming to get a tour of the school.
Yes, that's my question, because I didn't know if that was, that already happened or not.
Yeah, no. I mean, the kindergarten, I mean, the preschoolers were already there and got a chance to step up, great, but yes, no, we'll have an orientation for all kindergarten families coming in before school starts.
Perfect, thank you.
And how?
Mine are all boring though. Um, so, uh, as you know, we completed our, our onsite tiered focus monitoring, um, haven't gotten the full, uh, dra, draft report yet, but they, the two areas that were highlighted early are things that I had identified right off the bat that I think were really impacted by COVID, so we had, um, some date issues and lengthy timelines, um, throughout the COVID time, and so those are, we've tightened up, um, as much of that as we've, we have been able to, we've done lots of evaluation this year and kudos to all of the staff. And then also, uh, making sure that students who are nearing, um, age 18, that we fully inform families, um, and the student when they're 16 and 17, um, that they have this big decision if they're still in school and turn 18 about, uh, who has the rights to their educational decision-making. Um, and so some of those were missed last year during the closure, which I think is true everywhere, so we'll continue to tighten those up, so nothing major or surprising came up in things we were already working on. I have created program descriptions and Mr. Wood has approved, um, in the instance, another district would seek a placement at Hatfield, uh, for tuition students. Uh, this is for the STAR program at the elementary school, um, and as a step-down, uh, at Smith Academy. So those are, are two, um, areas that we would be, um, uh, available to review, uh, potential tuition students in, and there has been some interest. Lots of school choice kids, which is great, um, so I've been able to meet with lots of families and a lot of kids have, they've invited me to transition meetings at their previous schools. We have a lot of new families that I've been meeting, which is exciting. Um, we've been, uh, vetting through some of our curriculum resources that, um, we've used, uh, and also ones that are similar, but maybe offer something different with the staff for special education specialized curriculum. No major ones, but small supplementary things, um, wanting to make sure that we use, that we pay for what we use and use what we pay for. So, uh, there's been a few instances where I think we under-utilize some things. I've been working with both principals around next year and to plan for our summer work. I'm in the process of hiring for SLP. We are going to miss Kate desperately. Uh, she has been amazing, I really want to thank her for all her hard work over the years, um, and she is choosing a, a kind of different career path and we wish her luck. Um, and I, uh, am thankful to Colette and to Lori Kratzner, who are going to help me, uh, interview these candidates over the next few days. And finalizing extended school year where if you have a purple form that you haven't sent back, please send it back, Robin has a stack. And I got to go on Nature's Classroom, which was very fun. I enjoy Nature's Classroom, Chris asked me to do it in the fall, um, when there were some, uh, needs identified, and so Mr. Patelli and I went with 19 kids and, um, had a great time. It was so good to see everybody in their element, so it was great.
Very fun. Any questions?
I, how many students do we currently have enrolled in the STAR program?
Currently there are three that are really anchored there, but we do, have identified some, uh, entering K kiddos that will partially, um, will be associated with it, case managed by it. Um, so we, it's, it's still not very large, so, um, I, I think I identified that we could look at, um, possibly tuitioning in maybe up to two kids for next year. Um, I did get, uh, one referral that we didn't proceed with, um, so we want to make sure it's the right fit as well.
And how are we getting the word out about that opening?
Uh, I've, all the Western Mass bed directors know, um, and so, uh, we, we talked to, we're on a, through the collaborative, we have like a, a listserv and, um, so, uh, people, we, we talk, hey, do you have this? Do I have this? Um, so we've been talking and I, I do have a couple other, um, potential options, I guess, um, but. But the first place is to make sure that we have the structure and description and all that down. So that has all been, and thank you to Mr. Wood for helping sort out tuition numbers and all those things.
Awesome. It's nice to see that really, like, in just a few years, really blossoming. It's great. Any other questions? Okay. Policy Subcommittee. We have seen the Chromebook policy and admissions policies twice. This is their third time back. They're scheduled for a vote. They are not in the printed handout in front of you. I believe the entire committee has received them electronically. So I'm going to ask, little admirality, so I'm just going to see, are you guys ready for a vote on this? I'm going to ask for, I'm going to open it to conversation, but I'm just going to see if we need to table, if anybody feels the need to table it before we do so.
I think I was making a motion last month prematurely. So I was ready.
I wanted to clarify that the policy, Jen and I and Mr. Wood, as part of the Policy Subcommittee, did meet, but we did not make any revisions to these. So what was presented last time is the same.
Okay.
Just if that.
And if there are any typos or, you know, not technical pieces, we'll correct those.
Okay. So, Adam, generally, the way things work, we put it up for a vote, and then there's discussion. So you'll have a chance to ask questions. Did you, is there a motion on the floor about the Chromebook policy?
I'll make a motion to accept the Chromebook policy.
Second.
Anyone have any conversation about the Chromebook policy?
No. I'll just say that the Chromebook section was added to the acceptable use for technology policy, and the longer agreement was going to be kept separate as a protocol.
Great. And I think we will help Dr. Driscoll understand that is, that policy is communicated, helping people know that if they don't take it home, there's, they cannot worry about the fee, that there's some financial options there, just making sure people are aware. Any, any questions?
I mean, I circled a few things as I was going through it, but if there are things that we can, that are minor, that can be corrected after the fact, then.
But no, now is the time to speak to that, make sure that we catch them all.
Hasn't typos or?
Well, so in Section 2, Returning Your Chromebook, it says, "Any Chromebook not returned will be considered as stolen property and will be reported to the Racine County Sheriff's Department."
So it, it won't, it won't go to Racine. I thought that would be kind of fun.
It's on page seven.
That's in the.
Protocol.
Protocol part.
Okay. So the protocol needs some changes. And that's not part of what we're voting on tonight, because it's not policy.
Thank you for catching that, though.
That's still helpful. Anything else, though, Adam?
In the, yeah, the first, acceptable use, I, J, N, D, B.
And the same thing in the protocol part in 8C. It's unsupervised areas include yada, yada, yada. The fieldhouse. Right.
So make sure we catch those notes so that we don't lose that. That's great.
We can dream.
Okay.
Since the, I'm sorry, since those are protocol catches, maybe you could email them to the Policy Subcommittee so that when they meet, they can make sure, make sure to catch them if there are any others that you had.
Okay. Here we know other comments or questions. All in favor of approving the Chromebook policy, as we have previously read?
Aye.
Aye. Chromebook policy is now instated. Any takers for opening conversation on the admissions policy?
I'll make a motion to approve the admissions policy, as presented last meeting and the meeting before.
I'll second.
Okay. Any questions, any conversations on the admissions policy? All in favor of the admissions policy as previously reviewed?
Aye.
Aye. And the admissions policy is now part of our policy. Thank you. I think for budget, all we have right now is a look at some transfers. Mr. Wood?
Yeah, you have in your folder, in your packet, the prepared transfers. This is all primarily within the town budget document. And again, it's to just bring the, the lines to zero. So that, so the overall town budget is not out of whack at all. There's actually a slight balance, but it's been the practice here in Hatfield to make every line be zero. So that's what these are.
So everything here, I will speak for the Budget Subcommittee, that this is all within our budget. This is just a shifting. We have a motion to accept transfers.
I'll make a motion to accept the transfers of 17,961.19 cents as presented.
I second that.
I'm back seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
And budget moves forward. Next up in business, we have some minutes to approve. Are folks comfortable taking these? I think there's two sets. Sound right? We have a motion on the floor to accept the minutes.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of May 11, 2022, and June 1, 2022.
Is there a second?
I second that.
Okay. Does anybody have any edits to either set of minutes?
I would just ask if we can add on the May 11, who they were taken by, just for the record.
Okay.
They were taken by Mr. Wood.
I figured, but.
Just, just for the record.
Yes, just for the record to have it listed.
Okay. So assuming that your motion included any amendments such as that, all in favor of accepting the minutes?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thanks for getting through all that stuff quickly. So as we discussed on June 1, we want to take a look at the, our policy and procedure around warrant signatures. So over COVID, we had gone down to a single signature, just part of the way that we kept folks safe and fewer people in the building. And then we, as the building opened up, readjusted that back to having three signatures for every warrant. I think we're foreseeing, particularly over the summer, it's already challenging now, but with people's vacation schedules, that might get a little tricky. And so my understanding is that we could have a waiver on the books for the summer to change the number of signatures required on the warrants. So would like to open a conversation about that with the possibility of entertaining a vote. So.
Are we putting an end date on that?
I think an end date would be wise, and if nothing else, it will push us to bring the conversation back up. So for the months of June, July, and August, perhaps, something like that.
Or I think you'd have to word it to bring it back for our September meeting. Because, you know, September 1 comes and we haven't had that meeting.
Haven't fixed it, yep.
Then it's in place until our September meeting.
To be reviewed at September monthly meeting. Okay.
So you can't just put the waiver up with just a, an end date of the waiver, and then it would automatically go back three?
It would, but if we didn't have a meeting already scheduled, we might have to have an emergency meeting to get that fixed, because otherwise Riley wouldn't be able to pay bills.
And I think that this, it makes sense for the summer, for the reasons that you described, but also it's, it's like a pilot.
Yeah.
To see how things are going. So it's wise to bring it up at another meeting and just discuss how it's gone.
I, I think so, too. And hopefully Riley can also speak to that at that point, because it affects her day-to-day.
Yes.
And for those who are following along at home, these things are reviewed by multiple sets of eyes, starting with Mr. Wood. So it's, it's not that it doesn't have multiple sets of eyes.
Are we talking about going from three signatures to two signatures or to one signature?
I, I think that's the conversation to have. I'm, I'm kind of a fan of two.
I am a fan of two. I think still having more than one school committee member reviewing is a good idea without having the burden of trying to get three. We seem to consistently be able to get two members to sign.
The timeline of picking up the third sometimes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think two makes sense. So I would like to make a motion to reduce our warrant signature requirement to two school committee signatures from now until our September monthly meeting.
I will second that.
Okay. Any questions? Mr. Wood, does this present any challenges from your perspective?
It's going to be very helpful.
Okay. So there's a motion that's been seconded to reduce the number of school committee signatures on warrants until the September meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Thank you. We have a small adjustment in the 2223 calendar, and so that is part of your packet. And the only change is that we have, well, it's two changes that are, that went together. We shifted a half-day that we needed to allow for parent conferences.
Correct.
And one day that had been a half-day became a full day off, because it was next to a holiday.
Right.
And so if you'll take a look in December, you will find that change. If you have an eagle eye. So the parent conferences would be December 2 and 16. And then on the 23rd, there would be no school. And then the 26th, which is the, that's a Friday, the following Monday starts winter vacation. So small change, doesn't change the start date or the end date, surprisingly. This does require a vote. Do we have?
I will make a motion to amend the school calendar as presented.
I'll second.
Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the calendar is amended. The next piece up is a retroactive compensation for a handful of our ESPs who fell below what became the minimum wage in the middle of the year. So in January, we adjusted the cafeteria salaries, I believe. Mr. Wood, correct me if I'm wrong, 1425.
Correct.
And so we are looking, and I think you heard Mr. Garrett speak in public comment, we're looking at the possibility of retroactively going back and, and compensating our ESPs so that they would catch up to that 1425, which is where the cafeteria workers are. Mr. Wood, do you want to speak more to that?
No, I think you, you covered it. I sent you just kind of a breakdown and a couple of pieces of information that are part of this. So we have 13 members, employees who are at $14. 12 are at $14, one person, for some reason, is a 1411. I'm not sure exactly why. But you have the breakdown of the cost of that, if we were to increase that for the 105 days that it starts January 1 or thereafter. And then just a breakdown of information for the remaining paras, if you also wanted to consider giving them the 25 cent increment so that they're, you know, just, just as a piece of information, if you want to give them parity. The, the piece about this that I, I think it's important to know is that this is very late in the school year, and what, it, it does require a lot of rework. I know it's only 12 people, but it does require not only our office, which we're more than happy to do, but it also requires the town to do. Because for every function that we provide, we do in terms of providing them with the information of what accounts all of their salaries come out of, they then have to go in the town and do the same thing to make sure that the, the accounts are credited for the actual payroll piece. So it's a little bit of a project, and it's a little, a little bit late in the game for us to be doing that. One alternative to that is to have a, a stipend, which we could put in the last payroll of the school year, which would come out of salary, but we could, we could, and you can have the stipend for any amount, but we could have a flat-rate stipend for all 12 people at $175, and, and that would, it would be included in the regular paycheck, but we would just add that, that flat amount. So there would be pennies that some people would get more than the, and some people would get slightly less. But in terms of managing it and getting it done and, and, and sort of meeting the objective that I think what the HJ is looking for, and that would make it all the way around more, I think, I don't know if we use the word easier, but it is, it's easier to do and easier to manage.
So my understanding of this is that it, it airs on the side of generosity.
Yes.
So, but in doing so, it's also considerate, exceptionally considerate for the town, who is understaffed this month, and this is budget-ending season. Like, this is a lot going on right now. And so, you know, I, I think being slightly generous, and it's within our budget to do this.
Yes.
And so that's, that's where we are.
Can you clarify, please? This had said 13, but you spoke that it was 12. Which is it?
So there's 12 and 14, one is at, one of the 13 is at 1411, so they're bundled into that 13.
So how many would get the stipend?
I would recommend the 13.
Everyone.
Okay.
So just to clarify, every ESP who's been under 1425 this year would retroactively get compensated a flat rate that would catch them up to 1425, starting January 1.
Correct.
And it would be in their last paycheck for the year.
Correct.
Makes sense.
It makes a whole lot of sense. And talk about a group of people that work really hard.
They do.
Yes.
And so to be able to have this available, which, you know, end of the year is not necessarily a given, it feels really good to, to be able to offer that. Any questions? Okay. Is there, I believe we will need a, a vote to do this. And this would be for a flat-rate stipend in the last paycheck?
Correct. So, and, so it should be clear. So it's our last paycheck, but.
It may not be their last paycheck.
Right, their, their last paycheck, well, some are going to be working through, through the summer.
Correct.
And some, their last paycheck is on the 16th, because they, we're out of school, so they don't work anymore hours, so.
So they would have it before their last paycheck, whenever that was?
Yes.
Okay.
So the motion could be.
By June 30.
To what?
By June 30, we would make the payment.
To approve the retroactive compensation for the 13 ESPs as presented.
I'll second.
Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much, ESPs.
I love that.
I do, too.
That was a great vote.
You know what? I've never spent money that made me happier this year, I can tell you.
Yeah.
Okay. So cruising on through, we get into some juicy stuff here with the first draft of the district improvement plan, which I believe you have notes for in your packet. which I believe you have notes for in your packet. And so, Mr. Wood?
Yeah, so I'm building off the existing district improvement plan. And of course, each of the schools has their own school improvement plan that is built off of this. So, you know, in some respects, you know, in areas that we have continued work to do, the plan continues those. You know, our main goal, it's broken down, district leadership goals. Again, no changes to that heading, student achievement, academic support, technology, and and sustainability is noted as well. I think there are still areas that we want to pay attention to, that we need work on. We have a new administrative team, new leadership team. We have different slants to be able to tackle these goals and continue the work for them. These, like anything, it doesn't mean that there isn't other work that's going to be happening, some of which may be activities that could fall under these goals. This isn't, you know, the only things that are going to be worked on during this time. But what I've tried to do is kind of give clarity of what we're trying to do. So, you know, under district leadership, I think it's really all about continuity. We want to keep the leadership team that we have. We want to keep the teaching staff that we have. We want to keep the ESP staff that we have. And whatever we can do to continuously address areas of communication. Obviously, compensation is the conversation we're having now. We want to continue to do that because we want to make sure that we have the best people and the people who are most invested and engaged in the work of our schools. For district, for student achievement, we want to continue to implement our writing rubric, which we have. We want to make sure that we can see if we can look at ways that we can grow up the work that the elementary school is doing on SRSD. If we can grow that up into the middle school and into the high school. We want to get a better model of reporting this data for ourselves and sharing it amongst ourselves, creating a dashboard, I think is an activity that we need to really look at. And I'm looking forward to having a director of technology that can help us do that. Because I think the best decisions are always data-driven decisions. And it's been, it's sometimes challenging to pull together the different pieces of data that we need to look at, and not just for the administrative team, but teachers need to look at that data for instructional purposes as well. You know, we were talking earlier about the math program. Part of that, understanding what we need to do, has to be from what the data is telling us. You know, what are kids actually learning? So we need to really look at that. Academic support, again, you know, looking at curriculum materials. But we also really need to look at our model of intervention and make sure that people understand how it is we're going to intervene and when and who's going to do it. You know, there's a model, MTSS, that is pretty well established in the state of Massachusetts nationally. And we need to really get our handle around that as a staff and get everybody trained in following it, not only K through 5 and K through 6. We need to have it 7 through 12 as well. And that will help us immensely with what might be a higher-than-normal rate of identification for special education because, and it happens everywhere. If that's the only place people feel they can get intervention, that's the direction they're going to go. And, you know, so we've really got to take a look at that. And I think Molly has already started that process. We need to really tackle that and get everybody trained well in that. In technology, we definitely want to move, continue to move on our one-to-one initiative. And obviously, we did a great job of doing 7 through 8, so we're in good position there, and 9 through 10 as well. But we need to do it really in grades 3, 4, 5, and 6. And so we're working on something now in terms of a grant that might help us do that a little faster than we expected, which is going to be great news, but we have money coming also in through capital planning for next year. So that'll be a really great boost to our ability to make sure kids have in their hands viable technology and working technology on a ongoing basis. And then lastly, you know, we've talked a lot about sustainability through our budget process. I think that, my opinion, we're all on, the town is, and we are part of the town, we're on the same wavelength in terms of making Hatfield Public Schools a place, a destination, school department. And not only for, especially for our own students, but also our school choice students, and as Molly talked about, for other programs that aren't as fully developed as ours are, for special needs students. We want to make them, we want to have that entrepreneurial spirit and make our schools a destination place. But there are things that we have to do. We really have to, we heard it through some eloquent conversation by our finance committee and our select board as well, and all of you, that we need to make available the kinds of programs and services. We talked about early care and after care. Those are critical programs for people deciding that this is a place that they feel comfortable having their kids come to because they're taken care of from the morning till when they can get home again. So, but during that school day, we need to broaden what we offer to make it really an enriched and comparable education that they might get from another setting. So we need to really look at, and again, this is not an exhaustive list by any means, but these are things that we have already started conversations on in various formats. And we need to continue them and make them come up to fruition. So I'm very hopeful that, you know, with very, very small investments, we can regroup and get these back on track during the course of next year's budget process. Or even in this summer, if we hire favorably to us, we could come back in the fall and say, this is something we could do, and let's try this, so.
So I just want to share that the committee, given that this is obviously a really important piece of planning, and this is the first time we're seeing it. Tonight is the first draft.
Yep.
I am planning on having this on both the July and August agendas, with probably some work time, work group sessions to come back and have even more conversation about this. So this is not one of those things that's going to come by tonight and you get one bite at the apple of the conversation, then it's gone. So just understand, we're going to continue to talk about this. And it's something we need to talk to the public about. We need to talk to families. Because as we build this, so go our plans. And we need to make sure that we're building this in a way that we're bringing the community with us.
I did survey the community earlier in the year. And so many of the things that are part of that survey, and I can share the results of that, are kind of embedded in this, in the sense that, especially around the program piece, this last one. Many of these, the general concepts or consensus is that, you know, we need to look at programs we may have had already, and they have somehow faded away. We need to look at regrouping around them, you know, in the 21st century, what it would look like.
And, I mean, I know we've already started the conversation through the budget subcommittee to start looking at what some of those things cost so that we're making decisions with real numbers, so that we don't get down the path and figure out like, oh, we can't do that. Or we could, but we've got to make choices so that we're teed up for that. Certainly open to conversation tonight. I just didn't want you to feel like you had to have everything right now so that you had some time to digest as well.
I would just like to express the appreciation on that last one of potential program ideas. That there are other, those are other offerings other than sports. As much as I support our athletics.
Sure.
There are certainly kids that don't fall into those categories. And I love seeing other options and other enrichments like this.
And for the sake of folks who aren't looking at all the same notes, some other things we're talking about are experiential education, foreign languages, STEAM options, chorus, movement, like dance and yoga and others, after-school learning and project-based learning. So it's a very diverse set of things to look at. And I know that that's not intended to be the exhaustive list. It's just a way that we're all kind of picturing some of the things. And there's other type ideas they can share. So, feedback, thoughts you guys want to share early? Or you want to cogitate?
I'm just wondering, when you said you surveyed the community, was it just our current student community? Or did it include families and students that we have already lost? People who elected to go elsewhere for?
So it was current families.
Okay.
I'm not sure how to capture, unless the town has a email database of residents. It's a great point.
It'd be really worth getting their feedback.
Yeah.
How well, how well did your survey results come in? Not the results, but what percentage of parents did you get here from?
So my recollection is like in the mid-30s, maybe a little higher. So, you know, it's, I know for research-based, they try to get at least above 33%. But, you know, it's not, even for parents, which is a targeted audience, I would have liked more. It can be done again.
And maybe through some different vehicles. So maybe some small focus groups where you, where conversation can spur a little bit more. Google Forms are great for some things, but not for everything.
Well, and I think Adam brings forward a good point that it's so important to hear from our stakeholders, but also the people that we're losing. You know, so maybe the town can help us identifying families who live in town and elect to not use the public schools.
In that
In Hatfield.
In that same vein, we've talked on and off over many, many years about doing exit surveys. And I know they're hard to get people to participate in that. But are we still making any kind of effort to have exit surveys for any students or families that are choosing to leave us?
It hasn't been on my radar, but we still have time to do it.
Right.
So thank you for bringing it back to my
That's what I thought, is that, you know, we've still got a little bit of time here that if we know, maybe we can reach out now in this next week to try to get some kind of feedback.
Some families might prefer an anonymous option as well. Which I know, you know, if it's an exit survey, it's kind of hard to do. You know, if we know we lost two families, we're going to know where the results came from, but in general.
Right, right. Yeah.
I don't know if we have, like, school choice applicants who then decide to not come? Or like preschool families who then decide to not continue? Maybe these are people we can reach out to.
We can certainly look at that list, those, they're still coming in, so.
Maybe there's a way to do the exit survey more anonymously. Because I believe, what I remember of the form, you pretty much put identifying information on it.
Right.
Or the kids' names, the parents' names, they sign it.
We can take all that off, yeah, sure.
But maybe they would feel more comfortable
Yeah.
Giving us some information if they, I don't know.
Yeah.
And some of these, you know, folks might be willing to come in and do more than a form. That, to me, is a focus group of folks. It's like, you live in town, you've chosen to do something different. Totally understand and respect your decision. Will you talk to us and help us understand?
Right.
And I think we could find a handful of families. And it won't speak to everyone, but I bet they will be indicative, so. But honestly, I'm more concerned about talking to folks who are sort of like, we're here and we're okay, but we're really watching to see if we want to stay. I am far more interested in talking to them because we got to keep them. And once someone goes, I think it's hard to get them back. So you can learn how to not lose them, maybe. But ultimately, let's focus on the ones we need to keep, would be my thought.
Right.
Okay.
Stay interviews.
Stay, oh.
Yes.
Okay.
The only other, I love this too. And I'm glad that we're going to keep talking about sustainability and about our goals more broadly. And I do see some, like, social, emotional related goals sort of sprinkled in here. I just do like to see that directly addressed.
So just, so MTSS itself brings both, it's not just academic.
I know it's both.
But I just want to, but it may benefit us to define it a little bit more because not everybody can picture that that's also what is included for that too.
Totally, it just, I mean, it's under academic support as like
Yeah, we could break it out more.
Yeah, and even like the social, emotional support regarding anxiety is, I mean, I guess it does also say social interactions, but a lot of it is just under, I don't know.
Yeah.
It's like directly tied to schoolwork, a lot of it.
That's a great point. I think one of the things, and I've worked in small schools for a good portion of my career, there is a unique aspect of kids who are together in the same classrooms all the time for the most of their academic career, without options to mix it up. And there are certain skills that have to be learned. They're not unique, but there are certain skills that really have to be taught specifically as opposed to, you know, if you meet different kids, you kind of learn them over time and then in different, because you have different exposures. So, you know, the social, emotional piece, COVID is one piece of it. But just the nature, I think, of small schools is that there are certain skills that we really have to very specifically teach kids and teach teachers about how to make sure they're prominent as part of their conversations when they do morning meeting or other SEL activities in the course of the school day. So it warrants its own sort of very attentive aspect of the plan.
Yeah, and, well, like I said, I always appreciate having it in here, but I feel like sometimes we just directly tie it right back to academics. I think it's more than that. I just wanted to make sure, because I have two page twos.
I know, I do too.
Is it a three, it's three pages?
It's three pages, yeah.
Page 2A.
Yeah, I got halfway through and I was like, can I just read that?
I have some thoughts, but I don't want to
Go ahead.
Catch up, do you have? Okay. I can't tell you how excited I am that we're talking about this. I think the timing of looking at this is great. But on the point of timing, I question whether having everything due by the end of the third year. I get it's a three-year plan, so, but it's sort of like by the end of 2025. I think a three-year plan that calls out some things that are going to be done along the way to hold us accountable for more than just the last year can be very helpful. And in particular, sustainability is one that I don't think we can wait to the end of 2025. So that's one, particularly with our planning on a townwide basis. I feel like we owe Hatfield to have that piece done soon. I don't think we can just stage that along, so.
For maybe having different measures for
Yeah.
Year one, year two, or year three.
But right now, it's that we're going to have a plan that shows how we sustain. And I think we need that plan this year. We don't need that plan in 2025.
There's going to be more attrition if we wait three years to finalize it.
Well, and I think if we're asking a community to invest in their schools, we need to show them where their investment's going to go. And what do you get for that investment? And I think the sustainability piece is part, is one of the places we articulate that. And it's the way that we're committing to delivering it. And so if we're going to go out and say, hey, trust us that we want to, we're going to make this better for all our kids, we're going to give you a place you want to stay, I don't think we want to say, and we're going to show you all about that in 2024. So that's, it's just a timing. I don't think it's a change in the work. But that all of these, we could start to look at how they fold out over a course of time.
Right.
The other thing, when we sit down with this next, if you could, in between now and then, make sure that all of the committee has a copy of the previous district improvement plan.
Sure.
Just as a reference. Any other conversations on that tonight? Okay, so we're going to go on to other items requiring school committee attention. I think this is, we can have other things added in. I just wanted to make sure that we're looking ahead a little bit. So are we in fact good for Monday, July 18th, at 3:30 at Smith Academy Library? So I will do some due diligence along with Mr. Wood to figure out how we are going to memorialize that for anyone to figure out how we are going to memorialize that for anyone who wants to follow along, because we won't obviously have quite the camera system there. But we will take a look at that, along with Wednesday, August 3, at 10 a.m. As you're thinking about July, one of the things I would like to do in that session is to take a look at working together to create an annual calendar for the school committee. And so particularly those who have spent a lot of time in leadership roles for school committees, I'm hoping anyone who's previously been a chair will come with some thoughts as to, "Hey, here's some stuff that's coming," so that we're looking at it and that we're backing up when we need to make sure we've looked at that, that our superintendent and our principals will do likewise.
I've developed a format of one, and I've already started plugging in, but I'll share it with all of you, and especially with Kathy's experience and Rebecca's experience for the last year, to fill it in more.
So this is one of the things, so that whoever the baton passes to in a year, they'll have that ready for them. The other thing I just want to give a heads up to, I want to make sure that we're looking at in July is handbooks. Because I know there's likely to be more changes to handbooks this year than we've seen in a while, with principals who are not brand-new, but new enough they haven't changed the handbooks. So that way, you're not surprised by it later.
It used to be that the committee would get the handbooks, like, in May and approve them by June. But that was back before everything was digitalized, and we printed them out and handed them out, and had kids sign for them and all of that. So I think the timeline can run later. There's not the pressing need to get it done immediate, but it is needing to be done before the school year starts.
Is there anything else? Anyone wants to bring before the committee? Okay. With that, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn so that we can go into executive session to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. And we do not plan to return.
I will make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, this is a roll call vote. We'll start at this end of the table for a change.
Oh, I'm always last. I know.
Engelhardt, aye. Boudreau, aye?
Bench, aye. Maloney, aye?
Fubelben, aye.
Okay. And it is 8:36, and we are adjourned from public session.